Alright, good evening. It's good to see some new faces. Um, the regular session of the Board of Education for County and Public School District 132 will come to order at 6:30 PM. Roll call.
Yes, Almond, absent, Brown.
Yes.
Carr.
Present.
Harris, absent, Ivy, absent, Towers, Harris, Story.
Present.
Okay, can everybody please stand, please, to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda. Um, I need a motion to approve the agenda. It was moved by Brown, and seconded by Towers. Um, to approve the agenda, roll call.
Almond, absent, Brown.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Harris, absent, Ivy, absent, Towers.
Yes.
Story.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, superintendent's report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Board and community. Uh, tonight, our superintendent's report will be given by our executive director, academic services, Adrian Bates. Uh, tonight, we will do a review of our middle of the year NWA data, as well as we have a group of select students here who we will recognize for their performance. Ms. Bates.
Good evening, everyone. So, tonight, we're going to take a glance of our NWA's data, and we're going to also have an opportunity to do a deep dig of some information. So, the first slide that you're looking at right now is regarding our student attainment comparison from the beginning of the year, um, to the middle of the year. So, as you know, families, our students have touched, um, recently, and that was the middle of the year. So, now, we're going to just look at that attainment piece. Uh, when you look, think about attainment, it is used to pinpoint what level a child should be achieving at their age. So, we see that green line right at the top, that's the goal, fifty percent grade level for both reading and math. And so, that gives you an idea of where we are and what we're trying to do. Uh, but our next slide is going to show you a different piece. This is the student growth comparison, the beginning of the year and the middle of the year. Now, here, you see some interesting numbers, especially for our seventh and eighth grade. So, the growth is at seventy percent, and as you can see, we do have some work to do, but we are really focused on closing that achievement gap. As you can tell, our sixth and eighth grade, they're, they're, uh, constantly moving forward towards that seventy percent growth. And we do recognize parents that our students into our board that our students have had deficits, but we are constantly trying to provide learning opportunities for our teachers to effectively support our students. Additionally, our goal is to continue to provide ongoing professional development to our staff, which will support the learning for all of our students. Our principals continue to, to, uh, discuss data, to prepare data meetings that each helps to drive instruction. And our staff has been, had really focused on implementing those areas of deficit to be less than planning, so that we are addressing those needs, also using our Illinois priorities series. Lastly, Ms. Campbell has been intricately involved in ensuring that our students and staff are working closely together in the planning and, um, excuse me, with our administrative team, in planning those areas that we need to focus on immediately. So, here are our next steps. Many of you already know about our after-school tutorial, um, which has been very successful. We've been averaging like three hundred students, so they both went to elementary and middle school summer. We've also implemented, for our first time in several years, a Saturday school. Our Saturday school, uh, really focused with our middle school students. Um, we're trying to target again those immediate instructional means that we need to address. And Saturday school gives us an opportunity to, to do some really great small construction, so one-on-one support. Uh, we've increased professional development. Uh, next week is our professional development week. We will have, um, uh, professional development every day from Monday through Thursday, where teachers have opportunities to select, um, particular, um, professional development trainings that they can use in classroom immediately. Additionally, on the, um, elementary side, some of our teachers there will also experience, um, professional development during the day. So, moving forward, we are, we are in a planning stage of having a spring break boot camp. And that will give our opportunities for our students to be in a safe environment within our community and to be well in, in, in that special season, as you know, springtime typically represents growth spurts. Um, but our students will have hands-on learning and also social-emotional learning at the same time. Our summer school and our STEM sessions, as we're in the preliminary stages of planning summer school, you'll be hearing more about that, but we want to make sure that we are continuing with the STEM process, not just what we do now, but throughout the summer. Our jump start for kindergarten first will be really our first time using a grant that we have that's specifically designed for a jump start for our kindergarteners. Because you must remember, our youngest leaders have lost, has some learning lost due to COVID. So, we're going to make sure as our students transition, I think this might be sorry. Can you still hear me okay?
Yeah.
We're going to make sure that our youngest leaders in our district have an opportunity to get that transition into their classroom before the actual start of school. And that would be the same thing for our kindergarten going into first grade. So, we're going to have activities, we're going to, they're going to be able to be a part of their class and be their teacher before the school opens. And then, the training, we call it transitional week, and that transitional week will also occur for our second graders going into third, and then our fifth graders going into sixth. We are looking at every possible avenue to provide success for our students. And parents, if you have things that you want us to know or, uh, would like for us to see happen, please make sure you tell your principal, because we're trying, we're, we're trying our hardest to, to cover everything that we can in excellence for our community. So, with that being said, is, uh, this is a part of this opportunity for me to celebrate our families and well-being with our students here tonight. As we mentioned, that we're striving towards excellence, tonight, we're going to celebrate excellence with the students who are continuing to make a difference with their test data. So, then I call your names, so your names are there, then I call your names, and I ask that you stand in front and, um, continue with the certificates. Um, Principal, Principal Brown. Ivy. Principal Brown, who's driving. And Assistant Principal, who's running that. So, family, I think it's an awesome pleasure that we're able to celebrate the excellence of our students. So, I ask that you hold your applause, they take great pictures, and we, we have a lot to celebrate. Chloe Carter, Harrison, kindergarten. Iris Sankey, when your names called, please come up. Iris Sankey. Armando Diaz. Chase Wright. Thank you. Chase Wright. You closed that one out. Marcus Page. Lenora Harrell. Morgan Chapman. Elizabeth Elias, Elias, excuse me. Chloe Carter Harrison. Samaje Carter Withers. Samuel Lamont. Chase Wright. Blake Yarborough. Haley Johnson. Marcus Page. Mia Hernandez. Sanaya Miller. Arian Newell. Samantha Granica. Aleah Kelly. Thank you. Imani Gordy, second grader. Parents, let's give these wonderful leaders a round of applause. And I also want to celebrate, if you look very carefully, some of our students' names is, has an asterisk mark. It indicates that that student also received a certificate of achievement at the beginning for their scores at the beginning of school year, so again, give them a round of applause. Audra Bradley. We have one more, because that's what I called her, Audra Bradley, one more. Thank you to our incredible leaders, but most importantly, thanks to our parents for continuing to work hard with our students to strive towards that.
Thank you, Ms. Bates, and let's just give one more round of applause to our students. So, I want to, I want to just give a real brief, uh, synopsis of what this test was meaning. The NWA assessment is not your standardized assessment, meaning every single kid gets the same question in the state board. The NWA assessment is an adaptive assessment, which means as the student shows mastery, it takes them up another level. So, a kindergarten student who keeps getting the kindergarten number questions right, it takes him to first grade. And then, it moves him up to second grade, and that's how we really see where your child is. So, when I was a student, we didn't have adaptive tests. Everybody took the same test, you figured out where you were. Now, we have the ability to really provide intimate instruction to our students based on their specific strengths and needs. So, I really hope that you take the opportunity to have a conversation with your child's teacher and principal about what these scores mean. I think some of our parents would really be shocked to see that they have kindergarteners and first graders who are performing on the fourth and fifth grade level. And we have seventh and eighth graders who are doing derivatives and trigonometry, which is a junior-senior level score. So, let's not take what we've done tonight lightly. Let's celebrate our students and truly congratulate them. Thank you so much. So, at this time, we're going to invite all of our students and their parents to a reception in our library. Uh, with the principal, we have some snacks and goodies and stuff for you. So, at this time, all of our students and parents, uh, please follow Mr. Drew and Mr. Ivy, they have their hand up. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. As we're making our transition, I'll give the last two elements of my, uh, superintendent's report. One, it's an, uh, update on our two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two audit. Uh, today, we still have not received any information of progress. Uh, we are waiting for, um, the Thornton Township Treasurer's Office to provide the orders with the information that they need. I have been in frequent const, uh, frequent contact with the Illinois State Board of Education, uh, to give status updates, so they are well aware where we are. Our district is not being penalized because our audit is late. It's not our fault, it's essentially because the auditors do not have all of the documentation from the treasurer's office that they need. Uh, our, uh, chief school business officer, Ms. Hutchinson, uh, and I would like to first introduce her, our new chief school business officer, Ms. Manette Hutchinson, please stand. Ms. Hutchinson has been with us for about a month, um, and she's, actually, she's still here, so that's a good thing. I had to run away there, I think I'm close. Uh, but I truly appreciate having Ms. Hutchinson on our staff. She is a veteran, uh, school business officer here, uh, in the South Cook area. I am very impressed with her work ethic, uh, as well as her knowledge base, so I'm really glad to have her on the team. Um, Ms. Hutchinson, step right in, uh, and start making things happen. So, she is in contact as well with the treasurer's office on a daily basis, uh, trying to get this thing right. The last thing I want to, um, mention on the, uh, my superintendent's report is that tonight, uh, in our consent agenda, we will be approving the November fund balance report from the treasurer's office. So, uh, as you know, our district is managed fiduciarily by the Thornton Township Treasurer, and they provide information to us as it's made ready to bill. We know that in the last eight months, we've gone through major transition with the Thornton Treasurer's Office. Uh, they were on our third treasurer, and now we have a permanent treasurer, Mr. Mark Sheehan. So, they are making progress, however, there's a lot of, um, transition, a lot of change, and there's a lot of fixing in their department. So, we did receive the November report, which we will, uh, approve tonight. Uh, yesterday evening, I did receive the report for December, so it's too late to add to the board agenda, so we will have that report, uh, at the March meeting. And board members, you will receive it in your weekly update for tomorrow. Any questions for the superintendent through the report? Thank you all.
Alright, thank you, superintendent. Now, consent agenda items. Um. They want to, it was said they want to question, let's remove, um, B. No, I'm sorry, not B. Is it on here?
It, uh, which one?
Is it? So, let's, let me just get it out. So, personnel items, A1, approval point in personnel. A2, B district operations. B1, approval payroll in the amount of four hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred five dollars and seventy-two cents. B2, approval of accounts payable in the amount of eight hundred ninety thousand dollars, three hundred, sorry, eight hundred ninety thousand, three hundred forty-nine and fifty-seven cents. Um, C, the minutes. C1, regular session minutes for January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. C2, the committee mi, um, minutes. And D, Board of Education approval for board meeting videos to be displayed on School District 132's social media page. And E, the summary of fund balances for October and November treasurer's report. So, I need a motion to, uh, approve the consent, um, items, agenda items. It was moved by Ms. Brown, and seconded by Towers. Roll call, John.
Yes, Almond, absent, Brown.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ivy, absent, Towers.
Yes.
Story.
Yes.
Ivy, absent, Harris.
Okay, action items. Approval to adopt the two thousand twenty-three property tax relief grant, tax abatement resolution. On number twenty-two, zero, twenty-three. Motion, second. Okay, so it was moved by Brown and seconded by Carr. Roll call, but let me make the motion. Maybe here I moved at the point, oh. I said the motion, they're ready to go. Roll call, John.
Alright, uh, Almond, absent, Brown.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ivy, absent, Towers.
Yes.
Story.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, moving along. Approval of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school calendar. Need a motion.
Can we, before we do that, I just, it, it feels a little early. I was trying to get more information on this, like, number of days, is this feeling, I didn't have a chance of it. Maybe we could just sort of talk about whether there's a possibility to kind of have a little more time to dig into this dates, particularly if we're doing these, um, weekend things, these separate things. One of the questions is whether we in fact have enough time during the school year, we have enough dates. Um, is, should the school year be a little longer? Uh, and I know there's some CBA things that may prevent us from doing that, but it, it feels a little early in the process.
So, it's, the, it's custom there to submit the district calendar as early as possible prior to July first, because you want to give your staff as well as your parents enough time to plan what their summers look like. Uh, our calendars are statutorily governed by the state Illinois that say that you have to have a hundred seventy-six, uh, instruction days, you have to have four, uh, teacher institute days, as well as five emergency days. So, what, as an elementary district, we try to work very closely with the high school district to align our calendars. And the reason behind that is that we have students in the same house who go to 132, as well as the high school district. So, you try to make the calendar as cohesive as possible for your families. In addition, you look at, um, your programming throughout the year. There are certain holidays that will require to take off, uh, per the state Illinois, as well as there are certain days that the school has to spread. Uh, I'll give an example, uh, we take fall break, we took fall break this past year, and that's the week of Thanksgiving, so our district is closed anyway, the Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. But researchers show that that Monday and Tuesday, it's a very tough day to have school open, and many schools have to close for emergency, because you don't have enough staff to provide supervision. And so, instead of, uh, trying to figure out will we have enough subs, will we have to close school, uh, as an emergency, we just give that entire week as a break. Uh, and then, we build the days, the two days in, into the calendar. So, we, this calendar, which by law has to be negotiated with the union, uh, we've gone through that process, the union agrees. Uh, all of our holidays and, and breaks are aligned, so that they don't interrupt testing. Uh, that's both in the fall and in the spring. Uh, so, the, the point of getting the calendar out now is so that we can give our parents and our staff the opportunity to figure it out, but it also provides the administration and staff time to plan, so that we know what summer school looks like, uh, how we plan back-to-school activities, and things of that nature.
Do we submit our calendar to, uh, the state?
Yes, ma'am.
The state also has to, like, mandate for approval, because it's by law, we have to have the students in school so many days.
Correct. So, once the calendar is approved by the Board of Education, we submit, we submit it to, uh, the Intermediate Service Center, uh, and the regional superintendent will approve the calendar on behalf of the state. So, we've gone back and forth with the regional office already, because we have to make sure, uh, that we are in compliance. One of the new things that we brought back to our calendar this year is school improvement days. And school improvement days are, I believe we have seven of them throughout the month, throughout the year, but it's an opportunity for us to release students early, uh, so that we can have professional development time throughout the year with our staff. So, on the third Wednesday of each month, of just about every month, uh, we've been able to have a early release day. And in order to have an early release day, you have to strategically bank time from other school days in order to manage the time you'll miss for having to have a day. So, it's, a lot goes into building the school calendar, there's a lot of strategy and calculations, because we have to make sure we're hitting the, even more than just a hundred seventy-six days, we have to make sure we're hitting the required amount of time each day that students are in school. So, the, the strategic plan essentially aligns itself to our district's calendar. Uh, the, the calendar drives everything we do, from when school starts to how we provide transportation to or from school for students. Our strategic plan looks at, uh, the big overarching ideas and goals, and then, based on the calendar and other things that are on the calendar, that's how we place it.
Since from, uh, February twentieth to June thirtieth, end of school year.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your question.
No, it was just a question, uh, he was saying about, uh, calendar aligns with the strategic plan, and the plan says, uh, in this motion, from February twentieth, twenty twenty-three, beginning of the school year, June thirtieth.
No, that's something else.
No, that's what I'm reading, yeah. He said that the lines, the strategic plan aligns with the calendar, I mean, right? Was that what he said?
Yeah, would you like?
Yeah, I know what I'm saying, so that plan throughout the whole year for the calendar that he submitted to the state will also have, uh, these things done to make our students close that gap.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, not, yeah.
Alright, thank you, Miss Brown.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I really, really say I always say I'm.
Any more questions about, about the calendar?
No.
Alright, baby, um, I need a motion. Baby, he, he hereby, with the Board of Education, approve the school calendar for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Chris Towers, and seconded by Carr. Roll call, please.
Yes, Almond, absent, Brown. Carr?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ivy, absent, Towers?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, approval of data's strategies, agreed. Uh, most, be hereby, with you. First of all, any questions about this?
Yeah.
About the data person?
So, great idea, but, uh, it, it feels to me like there's no NTE, no not to exceed, any sense of how, how much time we're talking about? It feels like we're just getting caught in a card launch with no... So, I'm wondering if there's an NTE that we can add to this, so that we're checking in. Um, and, and do you have a sense of how much time this person is going to have?
Um, so, in reality, we budgeted this as a full-time position, uh, for this year, and because it was not a full-time position, we still have the funds allocated. Uh, at this point, we have not created a, uh, not-to-exceed time limit, because we understand the severity of where we are as it relates to academic progress and performance. So, we're hoping that our data, uh, strategists will be able to come in and really facilitate meaningful, uh, conversations and instructional planning with our administration and staff. So, uh, that position, I think, was budgeted around sixty thousand dollars, but because we won't get nowhere close to it, uh, and it is an hourly rate, but we will monitor, uh, what it looks like.
My question, so, this doctor will be on call if needed, June thirtieth, according to this?
Yes, ma'am, to the end of school year.
Okay, so, then we really don't know how much we're going to be spending until the end of, until they, uh, span from his position or end of school year.
Well, uh, uh, we will have a better idea once we bring... Uh, uh, we will have a better idea once we bring the, the strategist in to actually sit down and start pulling back the layers of the work. Once we actually devise the plan, it's one thing to have a theory of what we want to get, our goals. But once we start diving deep into how we get there, excuse me, how we get there, that's when we'll have a better understanding of the scope of work.
Will this individual be working from home or on premises?
Everything will be in the district, with the teams, in the classrooms, in POC meetings.
So they have a designated space for, you know, their operations?
We will make something work for them.
You say they're going in events?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. But you, but you also say something about sixty thousand dollars, so this person cannot exceed this sixty thousand or they can't exceed it?
Oh, but we won't get anywhere close to that. But the sixty thousand dollars, we would have hired a person to do the job full-time for the year.
Thank you.
I do hope though this means that we can still look for a data person, so I don't want us to wait until the end of this contract.
That, that is correct, so the, the goal is to have a person for the new fiscal year, July one. That is the goal. And what we're looking at is how do we, uh, realign some of the duties? We currently have our MTSS coordinator, uh, Ms. Kimble. She does a whole lot of the work, uh, in our district as it relates to data, uh, instructional planning, working with principals. And so my academic team and I have been having conversations about realigning, uh, different roles and responsibilities uh, within some of our leaders here. So it, it's highly possible that we can just realign some of the work, uh, to Ms. Kimble's position to giving her a little more of the data responsibilities and less of the attendance and student services. Uh, but that is still under consideration for next year. But we will continue with the, uh, strategist now as a consultant and then for July first, we'll have a full-time person. Be that a new hire or a transition.
July first, we have a full-time person as what?
Who's doing data, so not that, it may not be a...
Just, just data or multiple jobs?
So that's what I'm saying, we're still having that conversation. We're still having the conversation because we currently have an administrator that does the job. But we want to beef it up and increase the responsibility and the work, so uh, it's more about how do we add this part to her role and move some away.
Thank you, Dr. Alman.
That's Ms. Kimble, our coordinator of student services, who manages our MTSS and data, uh, performance management.
Excuse me, can you speak into the mic, the, the, the board when you all are talking because we can't hardly hear it over here?
So, so we're just asking about who this, I don't remember any position description, so I'm intrigued.
So Ms. Kimble, our coordinator of student service, her job entails three major buckets of work. Student services includes MTSS, which is truly the school improvement on how do you use data to drive instruction, to change a student's trajectory, that's the MTSS portion. The second government is she manages our student attendance for the district as well as she manages our student discipline program. So our preliminary thoughts are to shift discipline and attendance to another administrator and allow Ms. Kimble to solely focus on data management, performance management, and instructional improvement.
And so we do say to manage your students, right, yes, ma'am. So you, so you say that manage your discipline, uh, issues, so how are we going to see the data?
Say that, what do you mean?
How are we going to see the data from the disciplinary, uh, things that this person is going to be monitoring?
So right now, the disciplinary data is, is, essentially is non-existent, meaning from the board's level. So the disciplinary data that's brought to board is usually expulsions, uh, major suspension, out placements. We've implemented a lot of restorative practices so that we don't have to suspend kids. Yes, you will have issues, you're gonna have fights, you're gonna have skirmishes, but how do you respond to it? That's really what we look at. So we do have data to talk about the number of students that were referred, were sent down from the classroom or sent to, you know, sent to the office for fighting for this. But the, the beauty of that data is what did you do about it? So we sent them to the psychologists, we sent them to the social worker, we paired them with a group therapy session. So we have not had any expulsions or any referrals this year because of our restorative practices. Uh, we have had some at-school suspensions and a couple out-of-school, uh, suspensions due to, uh, things in our student code of conduct, uh, but overall, our discipline has been extremely low this year.
And the reason why I'm asking this because, um, I, I have heard, uh, that they have been fired. And so, you know, we want to be able to make sure that our policy reflects on what we, uh, on what we do here and what we expect out of the district.
So our student code of conduct was written in response to, uh, Senate Bill one hundred, which governs how we handle discipline. And here's the reality, just because a kid had a fight in school does not mean that they get suspended. What systems and structures are you putting in place to rehabilitate the kid to make sure that they don't do this again?
Use it as a learning.
You use it as a learning experience, and how do we shift and change the behavior?
Right, a social emotion.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
So I do, I do think that I was in, and I was certainly, I put it higher, but I, I am concerned we're hiring somebody to, to support this Dr. Harris. Uh, and I do want us to be really explicit, if we are to be a data-driven, uh, district, that we are hiring the right person for that job. And so I don't, I'm not suggesting I don't know Ms. Kimble, but I do, if this is the person that we voted to hire, I don't remember a job description having this in it. Uh, and I do think that we need to hire, uh, somebody that has this particular skill set and focus. So I don't, I'm not, I am, as a board member, saying that I, I, so, you know, I think we should have a data-driven school district. We should have somebody that has a specialty in, in data. Um, I, if it's Ms. Kimble, I don't remember that being prominent in her resume. Um, but if, if we, I, I don't want this, this to slip away, uh, for us to sort of, um, freshen it up the carpet and, and, and think that we've sort of addressed it. So I just want to be on record as saying that I think that if we're going to be a data-driven, um, school district, that we make sure that we divert adequate funds and aligning, our hiring to, for that purpose. And as you can see, I think we're all, I guess I should speak for myself, I'm really interested in the data. It should, it should be for, um, for, to leading everything that we do. Um, and I think we're getting there, when I applaud you, and I'm serving, I, I know my name, I'm not going to tell you who to hire, it's not my role. But I do think that, you know, out of retreat, we were explicit in a position description that was for a data.
Driven individual.
And I'm, I'm concerned that we are sort of trying to skirt around the issue as opposed to sort of address it now.
So I, I can assure you, Ms., uh, Brown. So a, all of our educators here have, they were hired because of their skill set. So MTSS is all about looking at data and assessment and what exactly is happening in the classroom. That's a huge role. Uh, Ms. Kimble and I, and I can say this publicly, she is a former principal. Uh, and her role as a principal and a lot of her activities as a principal were how do you use data to change the trajectory of your school? So what we really need, uh, is a person who understands what assessment is. A person who understands how to manipulate the data. But more than anything, we need a person who understands how to support teachers and principals in the classroom to make the instructional adjustments that our students need. So, uh, Ms. Kimble actually created our MTSS program for the district. Uh, we rolled that out, I want to say October, November, Ms. Bates. And we've been providing our staff with a lot of training. Uh, and our teachers have shown great appreciation for taking a deeper look and from other perspectives of how we, uh, support students based on data. Uh, being a data-driven district is extremely important to me because that's the only way we're going to truly move the needle for students. We can't talk about generic instruction. That day is over when we talk about we're going to teach one lesson to a class of twenty-five students and expect everybody to get it. We have to be able to disaggregate data to say, this group of kids need this, this group of students need that. And then we provide them that immediate and intimate attention in order to close the achievement gap. So I'm really excited about the work that our administrators and our teachers have done already. Uh, and even then, the work that we have cut out for them. Uh, in our strategic plan focus groups, I was only in the focus group for our district administrators. And one of the things was our teachers have, our teachers continue to tell us the areas that they struggle with. So this is how we have to move forward. So my team, uh, our director of structural support, Ms. Saberson, she manages a lot of the professional development. So we have, uh, curriculum groups working every day, just about. We have people reviewing, uh, what we're teaching and how we, how we teach it. Uh, next week, I believe it's next week coming up, we have Principal Brown and a group of teachers doing professional development, uh, for teachers across the district about how do you put students, how do you use data to put students in small groups and then provide them the resources that they need at their level? We understand that every student in our district is not at the level that they're supposed to be based on their grade. So how do you strategically provide them instructional resources at a level that they understand? If you're in fourth grade but you're performing on a first grade level, how do we come to where you are? Let's help you master the first grade level. And then we're going to move you up to the second grade level. And once you master that, we're going to continue to grow. But that's through intentional practice, that's through strategic planning in the classroom. Teachers can't just say, I'm going to teach one lesson every day. That's not how it works. You may teach five or six lessons every day in every single subject just because you're really intentionally hitting the ability group of those students who sit in front of you. So I appreciate your, uh, your concern about where we are with data, but I'm very happy to report that we are moving. We are instituting best practice research data. And as a superintendent, I am very proud of the staff that I have. Uh, it's not easy doing this work, right? But I am very happy to have four administrators and principals who've done this work. Not just, uh, who can talk about it, but who can show, I've done this work, I've led this work, I've led entire buildings uh, to get it done. So I'm really happy about what we've done, but I recognize that we have so much further to go.
Thank you, so, uh, your question just about the monies. So what funds is this coming from? Is it coming from grants?
Yes, this is being paid for out of our grants.
Which grant is that?
We have multiple grants, so one of our grants for, uh, uh, our asset grants for COVID was about how do you close the achievement gap? So providing staff with professional development, bringing in, uh, embedded coaches. So our data strategists will work hand in hand with principals. Our data strategy will go into classrooms, uh, just like I'm in classrooms every week, Ms. Bates is there. Our data strategy will go in classrooms with the principals and say, these are some things I recommend that you, uh, force the teachers on. Here's an opportunity to basically, uh, provide this group of students a learning, uh, advantage that they missed. So it, it's a very hands-on process. Uh, we have tons of funding through grants because the both state and federal recognize all of our students are struggling because of this pandemic. So it's our responsibility to provide direct instruction to kids, but it's also our responsibility to provide the support to teachers who may not have the skill set to dig that deep or to push that high.
So who goes into the classroom, you said to, I'm sorry. Who goes into the classroom to support the teacher, uh, with their data saying this is what the students need to close that gap? What was that individual's name?
So essentially, that's the role of the principal, right? And the assistant principal. But our, our coordinator of MTSS and student service, she works with the principals to guide and lead. So they're in the classroom together, understanding what, what's the issue? How, how do we fix it? Here are some tips, here's some support. And then they're part of, they do, uh, every week, all of our teachers have, uh, grade level meetings and professional development sessions where they're meeting with the administration, they're meeting with, uh, our MTSS coaches. Myself and Ms. Bates, we sit in on a lot of those grade level meetings. And we're talking about strategies to implement in order to close the gap for our students.
You get a question?
I have a question.
Alright, so let me just clear the distinctions to, if, the person that we're about to vote on, what's the distinction here? So, so I hear about it, we already have it. So I'm trying to understand what leader we're trying to fill, and still want to reiterate that I think a, a conversation about a different kind of data strategist is going to be important, uh, for the year. But can you just, Dr. Alman, because I hear, I really have this, so then what was this expenditure for?
So the, the data strategist, uh, Dr. Mabel Alfred, she's a retired superintendent, uh, along a lifelong career of working in curriculum instruct, instruction and assessment. So essentially, what Dr. Alfred is going to do, uh, is take an even deeper dive into what data looks like. And that deeper dive is, what are the systems and structures that we have at the district level that we need to fix, add, create in order for principals and teachers and students to, uh, perform at the highest levels? So what Ms. Kimble is doing, again, she's one person. And that one, one person working for every grade level is challenging. And, and sometimes you have your limits as to how deep you can go. But now our consultant coming in, the goal that we brought her for is embedded coaching. You're fixed in the building, you're fixed with the principal. You're actually sitting there for two, three hours possibly with the teacher. Every teacher in fifth grade is doing well but Mr. Alexander. I'm going to work with Mr. Alexander specifically so that we can provide him the support he needs in order to support the students. So the data strategist, uh, consultant works at a more granular level in specific pockets. And once the person is onboard, working with the principals, we're going to devise a plan of what specific support looks like in each building. What Earl needs could be different, it probably is different than what Calum needs. And so that's where the, the strategist is coming in to have conversation about what exactly are you lacking? Let's talk about the strengths. Now let's talk about what are some areas you can improve and then actually work to put those systems and structures in place.
So is, is her job title data strategist consultant?
Yes.
That's her job?
Yes, she's a consultant, not a full-time employee, she's just an hourly consultant that comes in, uh, based on how we design the program.
You obviously on page ninety-five as well. Yeah. So, uh, baby, in here by the way. Baby, in here by the way that the Board of Education approved the data strategist agreement with Dr. Mabel Alfred from February twenty, twenty, two thousand twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of a hundred twenty-five dollars per hour of services provided to the district. Who have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Two seconds.
Story.
Story. Okay. Alman, absent, Brown.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Harris.
Yeah.
Ivy, absent, Towers.
Yes.
Story.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Public comments. Um, if you intend to speak, please fill out completely a question and comments form and present it to the superintendent's secretary at this time. The board will be prepared to address those comments related to the agenda within a reasonable time. However, the comments may be forwarded to the superintendent for an individual response. No other discussion or action will take place. Please remain seated until you are recognized by the fourth president. Every person intended to speak must come to the podium to state your comments, questions. Please state your name. Comments will be limited to three minutes.
First, we have two persons, Mr. Clinton.
Good evening, Mr. Clinton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I'd also like to say Happy New Years. This is the first time I've seen you all with faces this year. So Happy New Years. Um, I do have concern because, uh, I, what I'm here to do is know that students will be individually focused on in the little small groups. That's, that's good because the kids do, they are at a different levels and I do understand that principle. But I also have a concern because there's a word that's floating around all the time is equity. And, uh, matter of fact, that word is sometimes overriding equality. And in the midst of us pushing or, uh, agreeing with equity, let us not forget that, that, uh, the, what did I just say? Equity, equality, that's it, that's it, equality. Because a student is in the, in the classroom and they cannot even hear about all equality. Because some parents don't even want them to be exposed to. We know equality can go very deep. So we have to save the minds of our young students so they don't be exposed to certain things that's not very important or necessary. So I think we focus in on equality as well as equity. But throughout the world, we're talking about equality, but eliminating equity. What I think, I'm not going to lie to someone, which that leaves on me. That's just about a map. That's what equity is doing and it's ousting out equality. So that's something that I would be, the staff, the superintendent, whoever is educating our kids should, should be very aware of if we're not. Another thing, because you are voted on, what did you vote on? Voted on, I believe, um, what is on the agenda, I said that. That you're going to post the meetings, public meetings. And you know, I think that's a very good thing because I believe if we post these meetings and put them on YouTube or Rumble or whatever network and inform the community, it can save you time because it saves you time. I don't have to pull your stuff. So we just put it out there and it's transparent for whatever, not just social, not just school board meetings. We talk about building and grounds and whatever, that's public information. So when those things go out, it will save all of us some time. Not only that, it'll be more aggressive, it'll be more transparent. Uh, another thing, I notice that, another thing that I would need to be implemented as a stakeholder is that when the budget is here, money per second, and it's jacked up five, six hundred thousand dollars, I think that can be put out there, let us through our community, what is this about? Not just speculated. We, if we're going to have transparency, I think there shouldn't be nothing undercover. We've lived like this for too long. Make sure, because if you don't make it transparent, there are going to be some nights. There are going to be some difficult times. So if we don't have anything to cover, uh, to keep it out there, I believe we have a peaceful year and everybody can enjoy it. The kids can be educated, yes. Community members can be blessed. Have a good one.
You too.
Thank you, Ms. McLemmon.
This is, uh, I'm trying to answer this, uh, family here. But I think my brother, David, he always called me, made me laugh, and he bring my favorite candy. We should be the mother to cheer me up. This is the year that Sarah will be one year my husband's back. So this is a really trying answer. So, uh, I first I want to talk, I first I want to address the board. You know, I, uh, think about my husband and I thought about what he do. Because he was such a kind, gentle, loving person. And he would want me to tell the board if I had offended interviewing in a way, I asked him to go to get it. Because I have to give him a count of myself and I'm working hard so I can see my husband again so I don't have time for this. Then I want to say, Ms. Carr, last year you said that if I said construction company didn't have, uh, people that look like you.
Right.
And you need to go to world school, but they don't have no one person of color. And you remember saying that about world school for years?
Okay.
They, they do not have, not one teacher of color. I, uh, in nineteen sixty-five, me and my sister and two African Americans integrated in our white school. And this is why equality means a lot to me because my shirt says, a people without knowledge of their past is like a tree without, with no wood. You know, like history, we need to comment into this issue. We are a predominant black community. And for a school, that was happening back in nineteen, nineteen to twenty century. Well, there is no, there were, there are no schools in this country that would ever, uh, people, uh, students of non-color and all teachers of blacks. Not one school in this country that happened to. And it should not be happening yet. And if it's happening here, you need to have a talk with that council. Because we at one time had, we had some African-American teachers in this district who, they were offended or talked about whatever, and they got it. I talked to some of them now. And so what, what I think need to happen, I think our children, they need to see that they don't know who, who developed the red, the stoplight. They don't know who developed the, the drive tool. Do I mean that? Okay. They don't know who, who are developers, uh, the, the driver. They don't know who, who, it was a black man that in Chicago. And they don't know that a black person developed the thousand pin. They don't know any of this. And I think if they knew some of this, they would feel differently. This is why they don't want our, our, they don't want to be taught because we have a lot of liberal people of non-color that look at this and would wonder why that these things happen. And I, I would just like to see that, I would like to see an active development that was being incorporated here in this district. I, I really would. Now, now to the taxes. I see you got a grant for taxes. But since you got a grant for taxes, you should not be going up, um, this community in taxes. Did our communities made up of mostly, whether it's not mostly, obscenious things? That's what our communities is made up of, obscenities. And you're going to keep taxing these people. Some of these people are just living on, uh, social security. And, and they cannot stand tax hikes over that. You, you have to, you got to go back, you have to get together and see how you can do this without raising taxes off of all of that. You know, it's just taxes. Every year we are raised taxes. And, and, and that's just not fair. It's not fair to us, as, as community people. Now I'm going to tell you, if anybody who have known me for nine years know when, when I'm tired, I'm tired. And I, I usually take steps farther than the district when I get taxed. But, and I do want to say, I do see a lot of improvements that you are, are implemented and are good, they're good. What, what I heard is good and I'm glad to know that. But think about that in Black history, of course, because our kids need that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go into old business. Um, the policy committee update, we did not get a chance, the policy committee did not get a chance to meet. I do know, um, John, we have policies that have to be updated that came down. So we will, um, send a date out for that, but we did not get a chance to meet for the policy committee update. Um, building and grounds committee update?
Uh, building and grounds committee, uh, we didn't have our, our regular scheduled, uh, meeting for February because we have not, uh, received any additional information, uh, for the building process from the last meeting. So we expect to have that this month, so we are expecting to have our next meeting scheduled for March seventh. We'll be looking to have some updates there. And we actually like to also try to attend March seventh. We've got next, building and grounds committee meeting.
Thank you. Chris, Mr. Towers, finance committee update?
Uh, no update. We did not need either, but hopefully now that we have, uh, our new CSBO, uh, we will have, have a chance to meet in, um, March. And, um, I, I, I did hear Ms. McLemmon's call for, for transparency. So no meeting in, um, February, but we do hope to have a meeting in March.
Okay, um, do you have superintendent, you have updated committee?
Yes, one thing, uh, our third session of the strategic plan focus groups will be on March seventh. Uh, on, uh, at twelve o'clock at night, we will have a community leaders and chamber of commerce, uh, focus group at Earl Oak Library. Uh, at two thirty to four thirty, the teachers and staff will meet for their focus group in each building. And then at, I believe it's five thirty, uh, in each building, uh, the teacher, the parents and community members will have a chance to meet. So as you exit the, uh, as you exit the gym, there's flyers on the table. So please take ones, the orange flyer, uh, all of the details of that, so please take one. Uh, we look forward to seeing.
Um, Dr. Alexander, as far as the, um, the strategic planning, how else, uh, is the communication being done? Because yes, it's on the website, but once again, how is the community, um, hearing about it? Because they may not be tech savvy. And, um, some of them may want to be a part of, of these sessions. So how else are we, uh, presenting to the community?
Sure. So we've sent it home through our students, which tap, which touches the parents in the community. Uh, we've also sent it through the village, uh, newsletter. It's out in the village newsletter. It went out to all the businesses through the Chamber of Commerce. Um, and we also made mention of it in our second quarter newsletter. Uh, so one of the issues that every school district has is how do you reach community members who necessarily are not connected to your district? Be a child or an employee. So one of the things we've been doing throughout this school year is every time we have a parent event or anything, one, if it's online, we have them to register. And what that does is it gives us their, at their, uh, phone number as well as an email address. And when we have events here at the school or any building, we have sign-ins, she's that asks for your email and your phone number. So we're building a, uh, phone directory, an email repository of people who are not necessarily parents, who we normally couldn't reach out to. So that's another, uh, reason why we want, uh, to continue to have events so that we can reach more parents. Uh, I can honestly say that we've had a lot of people to call the district office because they saw a flyer at the village, they saw it in the newspaper, uh, they've seen it on the marquee, uh, they've sawed it in something in their, uh, quarterly newsletter. So the word is getting out, uh, but we will continue to market the events. Not even just strategic planning, but everything we do. We will continue to market the events so that we can have the most participation possible.
So maybe with the businesses, if we can go, you know, have use, can we put this in the window? So, I mean, because this is something for the school, the strategic plan and getting our school back on the right track. So we want all the stakeholders to be involved. So maybe that's something we could do too, and just with the, you know, those who have businesses to see if they could just put some in their, uh, business.
Yes.
Luke, don't you speak with the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes.
I used to speak with them and people that's, uh, has businesses, existing in this community, they all meet at the Chamber of Commerce discussing, yeah, and we, and superintendent usually goes.
Yes.
Dr. Rivers used to go.
I am a member of the Chamber.
Yes.
We actually have a meeting coming up next week. And we did have, we had a chamber lunch for their focus group. So we did have members from the Chamber, uh, to come.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, the superintendent transitions to the committee.
We did, I do want to encourage more members to, uh, I do got a link. Uh, so hopefully you signed on and have checked out the shed, is that what it's called? The E something? The superintendent eval, some students all to, uh, get on, log on, have a look at what's there. I did email to the contractor today, because this, for me, there was some confusion about how the document was displayed, so just know that that's happening. But we, we did meet this way.
So basically, board members, it's the, um, superintendent evaluation. So it was a link, uh, we voted to have it online. So it was a link from super eval. Dr. Alexander met with representative, representative, and now they want to meet with us, uh, so they can explain the tool and how we evaluate the superintendent. Um, Dr. Alexander will share his mid-year goals with us to let us know where he is and where have he met in the process of his mid-year. And then it'll be the, um, evaluation process of the superintendent based on his goals.
Is this something by, um, Zoom? Is this meeting open by Zoom, explaining of the eval that we're going to be utilizing?
Well, so, um, the board, uh, we need to, since this is talking about the employee and the evaluation personnel, we need to have a meeting or a special session so we can talk about everything and set up a schedule with the representative. That's who we are. I mean, do we have, um, availability next week or in thinking this month?
So isn't that the, uh, now president, your job, pool and meeting together?
Well, I'm pulling it together right now. We have a board and it's open forum, so. Yes. So if we can have a special, if you're available for a special session next week, any?
Send out some dates.
Send out some dates? All right. We're looking to the Zoom. Yeah, I have to ask the attorney again if we could continue to do those Zoom meetings because it was like during COVID, we had those Zoom meetings. Okay, I'll send out some dates to you all and, uh, see if we can have the special session so we can, uh, go over the super eval tool to evaluate the superintendent.
All right, thank you.
All right, um, new business, foyer update?
We had, uh, six foias since our last board meeting and they're all closed.
Yes, six, uh, foias, we've received six foias since our last board meeting and all six have been closed.
And I have a question regarding?
Yes, they have been written on the website.
So I sent you this, like, email about one of those foias. I never got a response back. So, Ms. Door. Ms. Door. And if I sent an email to you, I should have got a response. And this is pertaining to our foyer. Okay, so any foias that had anything to do with me in the previous incident that happened about me being removed from the chair, I should have gotten that information. That information should have not been to someone in the foyer versus me when I requested it months ago. So, as a board member, I requested some information, and I did not get anything, no response whatsoever.
All right, so here's the response now. You requested the, um?
You can send me, you can send me whatever response via email, and I asked if I'd have had today, earlier. And this is in my email, and the response back from that person who sent the foyer, they got a response back on the 14th. And I requested to pad it before board meeting, and I got nothing. I got no response at all in regards to my email. And the email was sent to you.
Okay, so I'm responding now. You, what you requested was already in our board packet. You already received what was requested as the foyer. That was my understanding. And sometimes when you email, instead of calling the person, you miss misconceptions of what you're trying to portray in the email. So therefore, you received in our board packet about the foyer. I'm not over the foyer. The district, Dr. Alexander and his team, they are over the foyer, and they have a certain amount of time. You requested the foyer. Dr. Alexander, we spoke, and I was given, which we, however, it was still in the board packet.
Okay, and again.
Go ahead.
And again, I don't have to, okay, request anything from the superintendent. I sent it to you because you oversend it. So however, however, the request was done, I should have got a response, period.
So, no.
So, no one, this is not pointed to anyone. They were CC'd on it. You, with this person, that didn't know, I should have got your response.
So, no.
Thank you.
In the future, if there's something I say received, that's a response, so no, no. So it wasn't nothing intentionally towards you at all. All right? All right, thank you, John. Thank you, Ms. Harris, for your comment. Um, board member reports. Okay, no reports on Khan, Brown? Oh, you want to? You want to be last?
Okay. Uh, I give a report. I did attend the, uh, the Equity Conference in, uh, DC. It was a very interesting conference that we went to, it was on Equity, and we happened to be there right there on the day that they released, um, the video on Brother Nickers. And they were riding outside of the hotel at that day, right? That was an interesting moment. But most of those conferences we went to, those workshops, I would say. They spoke about Equity. It was one I went to, very interesting. It was a small, white district, and they showed us a video of when they tried to present Equity work to their school district. And you would have thought that these people, uh, they were, they had the police there and everything, these families were really upset because the school district was trying to, uh, just import, get in with the tax. Give the students some knowledge base on Equity. This is in line with one of our community members talking about today. Integration, Equity covers a whole lot of things, right? So, it's really in line with what one of our community partners was saying today that I think we can do better as a district, an African-American predominantly district. Uh, we need to put our information out there. We can't assume, because most of our population is African-American, that our students, even our teachers, is aware of the struggle, right? And equity, I know we look at it, most of the time it's race, but it's not race, it's a whole lot of things, right? So I really think that our district, I'm not sure if we're doing it or not, uh, we got a few more months here, but I think we really should look into having a, a, a DEI plan, a diversity, equity, inclusion plan for the district. I think, uh, it, it serves us very well. But there's another point I can do. While I was there, all these things would be in vain. You cannot teach students how to, uh, be equitable, equity, and we can't be civil. You can't, you just can't do it. You just can't do it. There is, it's too much going on in the world. It's really too much going on. Civility needs to come back. You can't have unity without stability. We could be civil to each other. The world needs a little bit more civility. This district need a little bit more, and so does this board. There's a lot of things that we can do, a lot of improvement we can make. You cannot, you got to be able to have civil discourse, different opinions. So, one of our community members got up and said something today, I really touched upon her, that if I offended you, she asked for apology. That's in order, sometimes we need to move forward. We have a large population of our youth in desperate need of guidance. Desperate need of guidance, social, emotional skills, and we always talk about the children. I see children getting a little bit better than I see adults, and I just think we can do better.
Oh. Greetings, everyone. Um, I actually attended along with Chris Towers at the end, uh, National School Board Association Conference. And, uh, literally I had three reports, but I'm a, I'm a brief. Um, so for anyone who don't know what the National School Board Association Equity Symposium and Advocacy Institute means, the two conferences, uh, that I attended, it pretty much, um, the Equity Symposium and the Advocacy. For all who don't know the conference, uh, the Equity Symposium is a form of National School Board Association provides for school board members, public school advocates, and community leaders. Uh, they examine and discuss the strategies to research what's best practice. Uh, that will bring knowledge to equity across the nation in a public education, in the grade levels eight to 12. The Advocacy Institute brings education, I'm sorry, educated leaders together to explore and discuss the latest policies, legislative changes in, across the country. So, these things like the district funding parents, uh, I'm sorry, district funding parents' rights and engagement, and the topic we all, the teacher shortage. So one of the speakers that spoke on the, um, on those issues, Roberto Rodriguez. Uh, he is the Assistant Secretary for Planning, Evaluation, and Policy Development in United States Department of Education. Just a few other sessions that I attended, pretty much it was, uh, about special education update, making extra dollars count, the role black male school leaders play in ensuring equitable division of services in the urban school environment. That we know also well again, that we need to bring black educators in our school districts. Um, we've had that, but we fell short of that, and hoping that we can come back. Um, and last but not least, uh, I attended the school cook division breakfast last month in January. Uh, that talked about the school safety violence, uh, violence that's going on right now. Um, and I forgot the book, but, uh, basically it was just talking about how our school districts can bring some difference in our magic, uh, to be just updating on what it looks like, uh, for safety. So, I'm glad that, uh, I had opportunity to attend that. And even though this incident that happened to Michigan State University students, it could never be enough of conversation about safety and about guns. You know, we, you know, we talk about having security officers with guns, but children are bringing guns in their schools and whomever is personally brought the gun in the school shot those other students. Um, it needs to be more conversation about how we can stay, uh, how we can keep the students safe in the schools. Um, that I hope at some point, the board can also look more into, uh, how our safety measure looks now. I don't know what's in, in the market right now, I don't know what changes since, uh, the committee of that safety, uh, when, when we had passed people that was here that retired, um, how that looks. Um, so I don't, I don't know how many of those things look, but I know that we need to have some, some more science uh, in how we can afford to make our school district more safer than what it is right now. But, uh, my prayers and heart goes out to the families that lost those loved ones in the school for goodbye, done by, so that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you, thank you. So, I, uh, first of all, Happy Black History Month. Uh, and I am excited to hear that you all are interested in, uh, brown and black in the district. Um, okay, uh, let's, let's see how this works. Um, I wanna say this to, I'm gonna get y'all off your phones in a second here. Um, I, I was hoping that we could talk about the climate change survey, and I appreciate the superintendent giving us the opportunity to see the results, uh, which was, I understand, a courtesy. Um, I was deeply disturbed, and I talk about leading with one's heart. I was deeply concerned to, to hear and read that the teachers and, um, folks that took that survey, uh, I think it was about 22% of those individuals saw the Board of Education as being an obstacle, a hindrance to their work. Um, and I don't know, you know, I wish we could have gotten more, I mean, so the irony is that this is political. We all ran for an office, so you can't take the politics out of the board. I wish we could, but it is not possible. It is sad that, um, you all in the committee won't have a chance to choose its board members. It's been, they're gonna be chosen for you, uh, for the next, you know, two years. Um, and so you will get what, in some regards, we get what we deserve in terms of our democratic process. Um, I hope that you'll outrage about the fact that you don't get to choose your board members, they're gonna be chosen for you. Um, will be a call, um, for you to think about sort of what this democracy holds for you. I personally apologize to any, I ask questions, um, and I thought that's what I'm supposed to do, I'm not gonna stop asking questions. But if I have offended any, any staff member or if you felt like you're, you're, you are not able to do your job because of something that I as a board member have done, I'm apologizing to you. Um, and I, I do wish we would have talked about that. It's sad if you all think that we are blocking your progress. Uh, the other thing I wanted to lift up from that climate survey, and I wish we had known, heard more about, is this idea that you feel that you don't have adequate resources. That was, that was, uh, and that was actually equal to your concerns, uh, about the board of directors. Um, and so I don't know how we get this conversation started. I, I know it is, we are in a particular lane, so I don't engage the staff. But if our teachers and our administrators don't think that we have adequate resources available for them to do their jobs, then I feel like as a board member, I'm also failing. Uh, and so I'm hoping that we get both, I hope the board heard those comments. Uh, I don't know that we can't take the political out. Thank you, Mr. Towers, for suggesting that civility, uh, be at the fore, um, because I think that is important, uh, that we act as adults accordingly. But to the staff, uh, I personally apologize if, if I as a board member have restricted you from being able to do your job, because that's not what I'm supposed to do as a board member. So there, that's it.
Thank you. All right, so, um, don't hurt everybody, and thank you, board members, for all having comments, positive comments. Um, thank you, uh, Dr. Alexander, for bringing his kids here so we could recognize them of their achievement for, uh, making growth on the NWEA, the highest achievement, and let them know that they just could keep getting higher and higher, the sky's the limit, right? Um, so we appreciate that, we appreciate to all the staff members, the administrators, and the hard work you have put into this with the scores, and now we gotta get ready for the next testing cycle, which is IAR and ISA. And USA, no, it's not USA, but no, with all the testing cycles that we are, and I think that, um, with the, with the data plan and the strategies, and, um, that you're saying, Ms. Kim will learn it, and all the teachers just understanding that data, I think that that's another point that we'll give for the students to learn. And even with the parents, when they doing those NWEA, uh, parent meetings, so they'll understand their child's data and where they are. So at this time, uh, I just wanna say thank you all, uh, thank you all for the comments, uh, to the community, thank you all for the comments. Because whether the comments, and I'm gonna say this, whether it's positive or negative, we're still learning. We're still learning. So, uh, I just take it as constructive criticism. That's what I take it as, positive or negative, and as, well, because, uh, Ms. Brown stated, that is political, and we're, but we're still learning. I just wanted to say that we are still learning. Okay, so, uh, thank you, thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Alexander, we do not need to go into closed session? No, so, board members, I'll make sure that, um, I will send out, when we have that, so if I send out, but when we can meet. No, we do not have to go into closed session. Do not. No, no. So, uh, to you, Ms. Harris, you will, um, get a response, uh, with that. Uh, and, and hopefully you and I, and I'm gonna say a puppy, uh, hopefully you and I could, uh, start talking, uh, about things that have happened. If not, that's okay. Put everything in writing, that's okay. But that's the next step, is the board moving forward. So, with that being said, a motion to, I need a motion to adjourn. Second, all right, second, third, and fourth. So, motion was moved by Towers and probably second by Khan, Roka.
I'm an absent Brown. Brad, yes, okay. Khan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
ID absent Story?
Yes.
Towers?
Yes.
Motion carrying at 7:38.
Thank you all. Be safe out there.